Please. Oh, and there we go. It's seven oh two. And thank you, everyone, for joining our hybrid meeting. So I do appreciate your patience and time as we work through some kinks for a hybrid meeting. I will do my best this evening to ensure that those in who are participating remotely are recognized when need be during our public comments and Hillary as well. We'll make sure that please let us know if there's anything that you can't hear to participate because you will be participating remotely that we can adjust. Whether it's the microphone or whatever we need to do to respond. So with that in mind, hold on, let me pull up my verbiage. Give me one moment. Have it here. Okay. As a chair of this committee, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
And Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
Chuck Carrijanus?
Yes.
Okay, and I think that will be it who will be joining us this evening officially. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on July sixteen, twenty twenty-two. This bill continued to exempt certain provisions under the Open Meeting Law regarding remote meetings and public access until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the chair as required by law. And seeing none, we'll move on. Along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in the folder titled twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along, use the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Public comments. The public comments agenda is a time devoted for the school committee to hear from the public as such. It is structured primarily to support the unidirectional recordings of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are some general ground rules for public comments period. And this is going to be broken down into three different ways. So if a member wishes to make a public comment during the virtual who is remote, they may do so by speaking publicly speaking in advance by signing up and there's a link, Colleen, is that link something you could put in the chat? Okay, sorry, I'm monitoring. Please have your Zoom name match that it will be able to unmute you when we get to that part of the agenda. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. As time allows, a chair would consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's related to a topic that has not been brought up yet. For email comments, you can email in advance to the comments for SC meeting at maynard.k12 MA.us. You must include the subject line, public comment, and include your first name, last name, and town to ensure your comment can be read. Comments read by the chair will only be read for three minutes. If the comments are longer, you'll be cut off at the three-minute mark to ensure all comments are able to be read in their entirety. It's suggested that you keep the comments to approximately three hundred and fifty minutes. However, comments submitted longer will be included in the public record in their entirety. In person, we will proceed with, you know, I just realized we don't have a microphone for in person in the future. So if we ever they would have to do that one. Okay. Thanks for noting that. I was just realizing that I was like, how are we going to do the public comments if we had someone here? Okay, and just for clarity purposes, my intent would be to go forward is to recognize individuals who are present for public comments first. And then look at to remote and then do the emails last because sometimes an email, someone may want to speak and read their comment instead of me having to read it. And anyone can submit their comment to public record after the public comment agenda has passed, provided they email a copy to comments for SC at maynard.k12 MA.us up until the end of the meeting. Meeting ground rules, I think we are familiar. I will introduce speaker on the agenda. We'll take turns. I think it's going to be very important that we, and I myself as well, will make sure to not interrupt and to recognize the floor. And I don't know in person, we don't have a raise your hand feature, but we can look at each other and raise our hand if we have questions on the topic. Each vote, because this is hybrid, will be taken still via roll call vote. And before we move on, let me call the meeting to order via roll call vote. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yeah.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Barra?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
All right. There we go. Moving on to the agenda. Public comments. All right, after all that, I'm really disappointed, folks, after I read all that information. Nobody wants to raise their hand and say anything? Man. So disappointed. Okay, next time. Urgent business.
No.
No urgent business. Alrighty. Moving on, student representative report. Do we have any? There we go. Hey.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us.
Of course. Liam isn't here tonight, but I'm so happy to see you guys in person. It's kind of cool. Different. So for our report tonight, first we have the highlights. Starting off, we have the social justice roundtables. Last meeting, we talked about how they were finding the leaders. And now these, like this group of leaders, they're going forward and they're discussing a plan with the district attorney's representative to discuss social justice in schools and continue with the plan throughout the rest of their school year. Next, we have our Quebec trip. Mr. Trudeau and Ms. Stagewald went with a group, mostly all the French students this year. And despite the below freezing temperatures, it was like crazy. They had a very good time. I heard all positive things from all the French students. They said that they got to learn their French language skills in social outings and some of the events they did. And last week, we passed the a hundred day of school. Everybody's very excited eighty more days until summer. I know we're all looking forward to that. Next, we have our concerns and solutions. First, we have solar energy. So students in SAC have been talking with the principals about the solar energy that's going to be in Maynard. They're all a fan about the green energy and nobody's really opposed to it. We all think it's a very good step for Maynard. Next, we have our update on the homework policy. So SAC members are going to be doing research about other towns that have cut down their homework in the past or got rid of grading for it. We want to communicate with teachers as well as like just the faculty in general to make a compromise between students, faculty, and try to limit or reduce the homework. Next, we have our bleacher update. The students, especially seniors, have said they're very happy to at least have the temporary bleachers for graduation. I know they're just going to be like switching sides, but they're still very happy they're going to have bleachers. And lastly, we have the SAC charter. So SAC is creating a charter to kind of communicate properly in SAC in the forward years. Just create some ground rules for everybody joining, everybody already there. Lastly, we have our upcoming upcoming events. Right now, like literally right now, we have our indoor track championships. They're either finishing up or doing their races. Over February break, we have, or tomorrow, we have the student faculty basketball game, which everybody's very excited for. If you can like find a video of that tomorrow, it's going to be very funny. The teachers are very excited. We have our Clark Tournament for Boys and Girls Basketball. The boys are on Saturday, I believe, at one PM. Girls are Sunday at one PM as well. And the boys will be playing at Oxford High School, girls at Clark University. Lastly, we have the foreign exchange students that came here in the fall. We'll be hosting our Spanish students tomorrow. They're leaving very early in the morning. They're not going to be here at all, but they're all very excited. They're going to be with host families. And Ms. Adams and Ms. Finnegan will be the chaperones for the trip. That's everything.
Great, great. And I just want to thank you for your participation on Saturday. I know I'd spoke spoken to Liam a little bit after, but I would wanted to get your thoughts a little bit on your, you know, from from a student experience and hearing the conversations around governance and our budget. What were your main takeaways that you were happy about, concerned with, would like to hear something different?
I have a couple of the slides on my phone that I took pictures of. But in SAC, we went over like the cuts that will be going on as well as just like things that we kind of didn't hear about. We talked about it with Ms. York. Some of the things we asked for, we learned afterwards that we will still be getting. It just doesn't have to do with the budget, like the town budget. So we were happy to hear that. We were kind of concerned at first, kind of confused because we're all like new to it, you know? But we definitely were shocked at first and then we cleared things up. So we're all good now.
Thank you. And I look forward in future years, just with having, you know, representation, I think at every each one of those, I really feel that it was so important and the message, I think, lands a lot better when it's not just the school committee members providing that. So I think Liam did a great job representing and I know that the thought put into that was really fantastic. So so thank you very much for that. I'll go around. Mary, any?
Oh, her mic's not working.
Oh.
Roll reversal. No, I really appreciate you taking your Saturday morning and and listening and being there and that. So it meant a lot. And also I mentioned to Principal York, pass that on to Kaylee also because it's, you know, it's a long time and but your presence was really much appreciated.
Yeah, I'll say the same. Thank you so much for being there and thanks to everyone else who made it. And as far as everything you presented today, I think the only thing I'm curious about the social justice roundtables and it'd be nice to hear more about those at some point about what kinds of things the freshmen are doing with that information and what they're learning. So I mean, I know it's a you know, it's a lot to ask of a fourteen fifteen-year-old, but if they ever want to come and tell us more about that during your time, that'd be kind of, that'd be cool. So. So yeah, thank you.
The only thing I had to ask about was the student faculty basketball game that's tomorrow. Is there, is that going to be streamed on YouTube in some way? Well, why not? What's up?
That's I'm missing it too. I wanted to see it, but I'm going to be missing it as well. I'm kind of sad.
I mean, I know I don't carry any influence up. That would be amazing if we could have a peek, but if not, if it's recorded and we can look another time, that would be awesome. I'm so excited that everyone is excited about it as well. So good luck. May the odds be ever in anyone's favor, whoever wins.
I also wanted to thank all of you that that showed up to Saturday's meeting. That was really great. And as I'm sure you already know from, you know, me being at the SAC meeting last week and then this past week, I'm very excited to hear where the homework policy kind of goes from where you guys end up. And I'll be interested when you guys finally bring it to the policy subcommittee, what what we end up with. So that'll be great. Thanks.
As always, Rachel, you're more than welcome to hang around and enjoy the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
Always love student participation. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rachel.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent report. Brian, let me just pass this over to you.
See, does it reach it?
Yep. Now we're going to multitask. Colleen, are you ready? Do you want to? And so that's a question. So I have done it in presentation format because we've been remote for a long time. That's sort of not necessarily what I think I would have thought I would be doing. I would just do a narrative and then share that. What? Do you like this because we're still hybrid? Does this work? Okay.
I think to read ahead of time, like, you know, a little bit, but you, you know, you do what you need to do for we have reference points. So if you're following along, I think for the public, they, yeah, I think it's helpful because I don't know if this is put in the pocket yet, right? Because it gets added.
It's in, it's in the folder as of last Friday. All right, we'll keep going. All right, Colleen, let's, before we go there, I will, I just want to say, because Rachel made me think of it. And I know I sent in the smores pictures for the Quebec trip because it was really neat. I was remiss in not recognizing the Steigerwald. So I, okay, she was the other chaperone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Brian.
That's okay.
Just a Hillary, I apologize. This is where figuring is, everyone's, I don't even actually make a note to myself for all of that. This is where we're going at the hybrid is not gonna. Yeah, I'm going to start with you in the future. Just to make sure. Yeah. So, yeah, you're the first. So I, did you have anything that you wanted us to follow up with? Rachel, I think she signed off already.
Um, that's okay. My only thing was maybe if it would be interesting or helpful to get if Leah was comfortable sharing his comments in writing. If he already has them written up. That could be.
I can, I can, I can email him, ask him that. Because I know he, I thought he said when I spoke with him once, I don't know that he was, he did have something prepared, but I I can't remember if it was exactly. He did look, he was referencing something during the speaking. So he did speak very eloquently.
Yeah.
About it. So.
Comments were really great and helpful and I think without, there's less bitterness hearing it coming from students than there is from us.
No, I thousand percent. So thank you and I'm sorry. All right, Brian.
Okay, back to, I just wanted to say that Mr. Trudeau and Ms. Steigerwald did a great job taking the kids. And if you saw the pictures, they visited some really interesting sites. And they had a great time. And yes, as cold as it was for us, it was equally cold for them, but maybe not any colder.
It was. It's negative forty on Friday.
With the wind chill? Yeah, I think, well, that's what we woke up to on Saturday, I think.
Oh, really?
It was pretty brutal.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So Fowler News, just so people know that we've had a screening committee who's gone through and I'll have an update tomorrow, which is why it says the first round of interviews is. So our screening committee has worked really hard. They looked at the applicants on paper. They've interviewed candidates and we have finalists, which will finalize tomorrow and I'll update you on those names. But I will give the screening committee credit. It's that's, if you haven't done it and you've done it many times, that is an exhausting job and it's really, it's, it's a super, super important job. Like as much as I would like to be part of it, I kind of have to stand back and wait until they hit the next round. But it's a lot of time. It's a lot of energy to look through the resumes, identify what strengths you want, work as a committee, and they've done that, you know, they, so, and were you on that committee, Mr. Waldron? For Fowler principal? Okay, I was bleacher update. So, yes. I think the interviews, they originally set five, one dropped out, so they interviewed four. Yep. Bleacher update, you actually have, this is actually older than the most recent update that I think I shared and that I think Mary shared as well from, I would say last night, the CPC meeting with a little back and forth and a little of just trying to understand each other and fund it did vote to approve funding seventy-five percent of the two hundred. Then I spoke with the town administrator who that's his exact understanding. So we're moving forward. Correct. So to clarify, there are certain things within that scope which are not covered under CPC rules, i.e. the the what? The press box is the main thing, right? But so the press box is the main thing that you need for football, which is not covered. So and we'll be diligent about watching receipts and whatnot to make sure that we don't submit anything to CPC that we shouldn't. And they'll be equally vigilant. Yep. Who's overseeing that as well. So it's a it's a formal set of eyes on that. Mm hmm. Correct. Right. So it's the scope of work that we want because we don't have anybody on site who's got that expertise. And
There, um, Mary speaking, questions?
Nope, nothing from anybody other than Brian.
No, that's okay. Either or Brian, maybe you can just restate them or instead of passing, just, you know, just say, okay.
Okay.
Demases to know. That we don't pay them twice a pack or punishment, like somebody else or something. Is that, is that, is that?
The question has to do with, is it more cost product? Is it better cost wise to buy bleachers versus rent bleachers? And I think we'll have a better, and that is absolutely part of the conversation. Right now, it looks like for spring season, we can rent and it would only cost us eighty-eight hundred dollars. The fall season, we need a little bit more, so it's double that. So it's sixteen. So it's like twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So graduation is built into it. So the nice, and I was going to mention that. So I'm glad you asked the question because I think Rachel mentioned it as well. So in working with Mike and with Liz, getting the one large set of bleachers, the only change they would have to make, so they'll be on the visitor side because that's where they go. So they'd have to reorient graduation, but they would still have enough seating for parents and then people can stand and sit on the sides as well. The kids always sit in folding chairs anyway. So it's interesting. So I think we will be able to make that work.
And are they actually taking down the old bleachers on that side?
The visitor? Yeah, is that part of coming down?
Like not in the next couple of months. No, but that's part of graduation. Probably not. Okay, I mean, it is, let me not say no, because I would like that. I think everybody would like that, but that becomes part of the bid process. So it's part of all of the overarching work that has to get done.
But will but it's not going to happen before. If we're, if we're still talking about bidding and then getting like that's not going to happen before graduation.
Correct. I would not think so. I would like it, but it's as you know, it's just slow moving and everything goes out to bid for X amount of time and so the bleachers would be on the side where they were this fall and they would just reorient graduation to that. And the student seemed and the principal in support of that.
Because I know that the students were, that was one of the things that they were asking was whether or not the the old bleachers on that side were going to be gone so that the new bleachers could be centered.
So the, so I think at some point, the answer is yes.
Right.
Whether or not that happens in the next three or four months, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on from bleachers. And I don't actually know that we need to, so Colleen, if you go there, so we've talked about budget and maybe we just talked about it in the last meeting. We could go over budget again, but the budget, the tri board meeting happened over the weekend on Saturday morning. And so our numbers haven't changed. The town's numbers haven't changed. There was a lot of discussion just about all the needs, both within the school district, within the town. We're very confident that in order to provide a level service budget, we need ballpark five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that keeps us exactly even to where we currently are now. We actually asked for six hundred and fifteen because we know we need a little bit more, not just because we need a lot. There are a couple of key positions that we've talked about. But sort of like we ask, you know, in my head, how I ask the town, like, you know, can you put something on hold for a little while? We could put that on hold and stick with the five fifteen as a level funded budget. So right now, at the end of that meeting, although there were no decisions made, it felt like there was willingness on the part of all the boards to continue the discussion regarding budget to find some common ground so that the school is not left with trying to rectify a five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit. I don't want to oversell that. I don't want to say that there's, you know, a deal in the works by any stretch of it, but I think there's, there's a willingness to find common ground.
Yeah, there were so.
So I'm going to be there anyway for the review.
Okay.
And so I will listen to here.
Okay.
I didn't get a chance to look at their agenda because they just got posted. But I would hope that they're, you know, initiating some conversations soon. I don't know if they're waiting for our budget subcommittee meeting. I haven't gotten the sense because that's on the twenty eighth.
Right.
Maybe it'll be talked about then. But I hope, hope we hear something soon. And I will certainly ask about it if I don't hear anything on their meeting.
And the question was about, in case you missed it, about whether there's going to be a tri board meeting.
Right.
To follow up on that meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yes, yes.
At home.
Yes. And I also just want to Chuck, really thank you for joining on Saturday too. I really appreciate that that operational lens that you were able to bring in support. So thank you very much for for representing as well.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Brian, question about the what we're saying, just to clarify the, on the slide about the proposed, that is the allocation requested allocation. That's not the proposed allocation, right, for the the five? The five fourteen, right?
That's the, well.
That's a level service. That's what we've said to levels of request, but they're not, at this point, they're not allocating. That's what they're proposing to allocate, right? Okay. Just want to clarify.
Allocated, yeah, that much under.
Don't we want that to say level service versus level funded? Because level funded.
Yeah, it's level service, right?
So just, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll make sure in our, yeah, well, I think we all understand what it is. Yeah, yeah. We're good. But that's okay. All right.
And then we get into if, in fact, we don't come to a better understanding with the town in terms of finances, then we are looking at not adding our support person to the superintendent's office and or the additional instructional time for Green Meadow. And there'll be some level of decrease of staff at likely each of the buildings. And then in addition, we're currently reviewing extracurricular activities in transportation.
Just to add the request by FinCom at the meeting. And I think some other members were looking to get a little bit more concrete. So like if class size consideration would be impacted. So I know we didn't explicitly talk about all of that, but I think whatever messaging will probably have to, I think, be a little bit more somewhere precise in conveying that. So just some feedback that we share.
Absolutely, we can do that. Then we get on to the big Green Meadow Building Project, which is super exciting. And there's actually, so I post this on Friday of last week, but we had a meeting Monday of this week, which I think I've already shared that information with you about the sustainability, but the big discussion at the Green Meadow Building Project had to do with sustainability and how sustainable can we make the building? And we started with kind of refocusing and reminding people that we're building a building for our students. First and foremost, it needs to be programmatically sound for our students. And then secondly, it needs to be affordable to the town of Maynard for our students. Then we get to, can it be sustainable? Then we get to, can it be sustainable? And maybe that's not everybody's order. That's my order. Educationally, is it sound for our students and can we afford it? Number two, and then we get to how sustainable can it be? And there's been a lot of discussion about the heating and cooling systems and whether it should be an electric heat pump or it should be geothermal. Or it should be sort of a more traditional boiler system. Um, and they all have pros and cons and they have they have different reimbursements and different price points. Um, which I think I've shared that with the school committee in a different form. Um, at this point, the uh bill building committee sort of revoked and went with a traditional boiler system. Um, and that had to do with overall cost and it had to do with that didn't require. Um, additional solar fields around the site, which my. Understanding would be that could be difficult um as a selling point. If you have to take down an acre of trees, um, people tend not to like to do that. So that's probably the newest thing. And again, it's still in the. We're getting to schematic design, getting to when we're going to submit to the MSBA. We're not there yet, but that was the high point, if you will, of Monday's meeting. I don't know, Mary, you're there. If you want to add anything to that, feel free.
Just the fact that um the the there was a substantial difference in price between the traditional boiler and either of the two. Um, yeah, geothermal or the the other one um that we're going to be all electric. And the good, one of the good things uh about the boiler is that twenty years down the road, when a lot more is known um. About the whole electric grid and that, we'll be able to convert it at that point um to all electric if we decide to do that. So it can be retrofitted. So.
Um, Hillary, I just wanted to take a moment to see if questions on anything. So far. No, okay, great. Thank you. I logged in just on my computer to see you. I wasn't able to see you. Someone did the presentation, so just want to make sure. All right, great. Thank you.
I would ask for solar project that we put that on hold until about eight because I have Byron Wood. Uh, Woodman from Select who's going to log in. He just had another meeting at seven, so he'll log in about eight and he can give an update on the current solar project.
Great.
And that'll be, I think, more beneficial than me trying to summarize that. Um. What I have for you. I'm trying to think actually. So I wouldn't put this in urgent business, but it didn't happen on Friday when I submitted this. So one of the things that we've done. Um, this been dealing with this week would be the swatting issue that's going around the state right now with uh people calling sometimes they call the school and say things like there's an active shooter or there's. That tends to be what they say. Uh, we had a meeting with our school resource officer early this week, once that started, just to say. You know, because it's surrounding towns has not come here yet. Um, how would we respond? And what do you think? And sometimes often they're calling the dispatch. They're actually not calling the school. So they're calling dispatch. And so it was a good to have a district level meeting to say, here's the, you know, this is the process. They get the call, they respond as if it's an active situation. They would tell us, you know, whichever building they would probably do all three buildings, lock us down. Um, etc. They would shut the roads. They would use the fire trucks, close Tiger Drive. Um, they would search the building, make sure it's, you know, they would assess it, investigate it, and then release us. Um, put us back to. So I did inform staff of that after our meeting so that they were aware that if we get that call or if. Maynard Police gets that call, that would be our response to that. Um, that was probably the most nerve wracking thing, if you will, of the week. Um.
And I I actually a couple of years ago, I went to um. A safety thing mass had a conference and it was at Assabett and they had FBI there and they talked about. Some of those situations and they presented some data which was reassuring that most often active shooters, they're not going to be calling to. You know, announce. So the likelihood of it, but nonetheless, it's still very, you know, nerve wracking and you get to respond the same way, but. Thankfully, the numbers are in our favor that it usually does not amount to. Situation from an active shooter, but other people can get hurt through the process of needing to respond to it.
Yes.
But thank you.
I just thought I'd share.
Oh, Hillary has a question.
Um, it's just a comment. I just really wanted to say I really appreciate that. That's the plan for how Maynard will handle that. Um, I I've heard of other schools that are um choosing to react much less um strongly. Because they feel like this is going to be a hoax and. That's scary um for the times that it's not a hoax. Um, so I just really appreciate how seriously you and the admin and the police department are taking it.
Thank you.
Great. So you said we're gonna.
A little Colin, can you check the overall screen and see if Byron happened to log in early? Uh, B Y.
I don't have a scene.
Okay, if somebody could.
So from the the Green Meadow, um, will the school committee have taken any action at any point to vote? It's really everything. When is? Does that have to happen at any?
So we'll we share everything with anything that any of the subgroups. Sends will make sure it goes to the school committee, the finance committee, the select board. In terms of actual votes, I will double check that.
When the final schematic design is created, which is sort of maybe like this third week in March. If I remember correctly, then we're going to make it available to, there's going to be a meeting of a a Green Meadow Building Committee meeting. That school committee, finance committee and select board are invited to um in case there's any questions. So the whole presentation and then opportunity. Exactly. Right, yeah, that's that's the we're talking about. It's.
Third.
Is, yeah.
Oh, good. Thank you, Mary.
So yeah, if we can come back to that, that would be great. Yep, that was it. Thank you.
I'm so excited to have someone in person. I was just gonna say, thank you, Mike. Oh. Did you have a public comment that you wanted to make or you just?
I did.
Okay. No, no, I think we were moving on. Um, but I wanted to, because this is a transition for everybody. Um, we allow those opportunity for you to please. Ask your chair for your public comments since we didn't have anyone in person any game this morning. I can't turn off the.
I heard my name, but I don't know what else is being said.
It's it's coming in and out depending who's speaking.
Chuck, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, just for those that are out there, if you can't see me, my name is Mike Waldron. Um, I teach at the high school. Um, I'm also um the MEA president. Um, my only question I had was that I've been hearing some talk about, I know that the. Homework has policy or a question about the homework has been brought up to the school committee. Um, has that? It has the teachers been invited to that discussion yet?
So the way it has been brought up was through the student, the council, and they brought it up to us, which is part of their role, just to share feedback. We ended up kind of putting it back to, we shared the policy then to look into. I would expect at some point it will go through all of those other stakeholders. It hasn't come. Whatever whatever is being suggested has not been presented to the school committee as a to vote on or to take any action on. It was more of a concern. Um, and the direction was given to the students to kind of do some more research, to work with the administration to understand. And I would hope that also engaging with the teachers will be part of that feedback that we would um. We would be looking for if there is an amendment to the policy that we would be needing to take after.
Yeah, because we we had heard that um that this, you know, the student government, the SAC had. Um, but we also heard that um school committee had come to meet with them, which is great, which is wonderful. Um, but there was some concern that, you know, uh, maybe the the teachers. You know, who would be obviously very involved with homework um were not. You know, if it was going to be a meeting that maybe the, you know, it would have been nice if if a teacher representative could have been at that SAC meeting and maybe was invited. Um, if if they were discussing the homework policy, um, I think just just for future, maybe just.
Yeah, I think that's the nature. So there's two things. One is. The school committee is just more of our our amending our model. We're supposed to engage with them at our meetings frequently. I don't believe they have the way they operate. They don't have a clear agenda, but the subsequent meeting after when they brought it up to us, it was discussed. And I think the direction was to. Do some to that probably wasn't either. I don't know. Back to exact meeting you were at.
Was anybody.
I knew, yeah, okay. And so I think that was, nothing was decided, but just school committee members go to.
Sure.
Their meetings, but I I point taken of absolutely making sure that. Um, whatever, whatever change or expectation or feedback, I I think we will make sure that there's a spot reserved to ensure that your feedback from the MEA and teachers.
Yeah, because. Teachers would, I I'm sure would be more than happy to join the conversation. Um, and. You know, there might be some questions that, you know, if it was a three way conversation. Um, you know, maybe we could have answered those questions or at least provided feedback or or information, but I guess.
So what happened was they had their SEC meeting and because it is our mandate to go and. He was at those meetings. We were just present at the meeting.
Okay.
So it wasn't like a, he was some feedback that's here was going to say, it was us listening in on what they were saying. Um, and so and then when they get to that part, you know, at the meeting we were.
Sure, I did say they do need to get more data and that includes from the teachers, of course. Um, so yeah, no, that that was, there's not any rumblings, whatever. It's not about like something behind the scenes where we're meeting with them and they'll make policy.
Yeah, it just it just goes, it wasn't any clear word as to or information in terms of.
Yeah, no.
When when teachers might get.
So kids should be doing that. If they they're the ones who are curious and want to know more about homework, hopefully they're going to come to you and do the right thing. It's there's there's no movement that's just between us. Right, exactly.
He did say that that their plan is to discuss in their meeting. Some of the things that they didn't like, but then also would go to teachers and and get some good feedback that and then once they do that, then they. For this, the policies are committed.
The discussion. The discussion that happened at our school committee meeting was through public comments, like the the students had written in public comments the way any community member can. It wasn't a agenda item on our meeting.
No, no, I I understand that. I understand that. Um, and and I would applaud the students. I mean. Some of them probably got their advice from me in terms of, you know, are we allowed to do this? And of course they are. Um, if they didn't understand town, like did, I did discuss with them. Some of them answered some of their questions in terms of, do we have the right to do this? Do we have the right to that? And of course they do. Um, if they didn't quite understand town government. Um. But I just, you know, I was getting questions from teachers because we had been hearing at our staff meeting that this and that may have been or was kind of happening. We didn't have all the pieces, so there was just concern that, you know, as long as I can report back to the teachers that eventually. The students and maybe yourselves, but it'll get to the point where if we we can at least, you know, join in the conversation, that would be a wonderful thing. Yeah, that'd be wonderful thing. That's all I was here for. You know, I may hear for other things, listen to the updates by state, but huh? Oh. Yeah, I I I'm usually, I'm usually a, I I like the open forum. Um, it was hard to get used to the virtual. I'm used to the open forum and I like having a microphone. Um.
Just for doing the week. This is, thank you for. Working with us as we test our, I'm hyper. This is the first, but and also thank you for just reminding us just that moment that we make sure that that time is reserved for. The teacher feedback and the policies. To make that, for you to make sure that that is, that is absolutely.
No, that's wonderful. And and I I won't leave you alone, at least maybe not not for at least a little bit longer, but you know. Might eventually happen to.
But it's not, it doesn't mean when it's again, because it isn't first.
No, of course, of course. Yeah, yeah, no, it's just again, the when it goes from word of mouth to word of mouth, sometimes it gets. And you know, it was our understanding was that there was a a discussion and I just wanted to make sure if it was just listening and hearing their voice, wonderful, because that's exactly what everybody's supposed to do. Uh, that way there I can. Yep, no, that's wonderful. I can report back to teachers and just let them know everything's copacetic. Yeah, not problem. Yep. I'm gonna move back to the background up, right? Oh, again. Yeah, absolutely. I you you guys know me, I'm I'm pretty.
Principal, you were there also, they're part of that. The issue, I think. But time gets to, it would be something that we hold that we'll we'll make sure.
Correct, correct. Um, and again, it it was this was more exploratory than anything else. That's all. But again, also to get feet wet because I I like the open meeting forum. It's it's, yeah, it's nice to see faces, you know? Hey, I appreciate it.
To the superintendent midyear evaluation, so um.
Yes.
Yes, that was the next item. So I am happy to, so in the. Folder entitled. Superintendent Evaluation. Um. Evidence towards evaluation and timeline folder that you all have access to. Um, I up have been uploading since the beginning of your information. Um. Which has multiple purposes, basically just to show. Um, so one thing in there is the overall. Rubric for superintendent, so the standards and the indicators. Which that's in there and you've seen that before. And then as so. It's got a lot of information. I tried to organize that for you a little bit. So there are subfolders within that folder. Um. So for example, I'm not going to go through everything in that folder. I'm sure you've all done that already, so I don't want to. Bore you with that, just some highlights. So in terms of the overall. Standards and rubrics entry. Um, so some things in that folder. That would stand out that I hope help you would be. The superintendent weekly memo. So you get that every Thursday with updates with standards and indicators highlighted on there to connect to the rubric. Since as as a non educator, sometimes that can be overwhelming, just trying to figure out how does that fit with. A different, you know, a standard or an indicator. Um, so hopefully that gives you information. It also meets one of the goals in terms of communication. So as we talked about earlier about no surprises. Um, just making sure that you're getting information in a timely manner. And sometimes it works well to go into a weekly memo that both you and the leadership team get. Um, other times it's just an email. If there's an emergency situation that happens, just keeping you informed of that. Um, in addition, using the smores platform to send newsletters out to the district on a pretty consistent basis. Um, lately it's been weekly. I don't know. Quite frankly, for being weekly forever, but it is right now because there's just enough new information and things are changing and maybe it's that way always. Um, but I know the, in addition to what I send out, um, which I think some people like to read, which I'm happy that they like to read it. I think as a parent, you also want, you may be more interested in the one coming from your child's principal or from the building that they're in. Because that has the specific information about when is the basketball, the faculty, student basketball game and when are midterms or when is the. Um, parade or whatnot. So. Both I send that and the um principals. Or assistant principal. So the leadership at each building sends that as well.
These actually one hope that we keep. I think people, the communities that are used to it because they, you know, have done, like the newsletters used to be coming out and. I would say if we. Step back from that, people might be wondering like they missed something, the ones who so. Um, I I I don't think it's too much. I actually do appreciate it creates a good expectation for for everything, but if it gets to the point where we feel like we're not. Sure, content or like, you know, that kind of thing.
I would agree with that.
Then, you know, maybe we would sell like, you know, revisit, but um, but thank you for putting it on.
Yep. Um, other things within the the folder would be the. Um other things within the the folder would be the budget information. The budget presentation, school council budget implications from each of the buildings, um there's safety updates. Funny, the uh literacy presentation, which. Has been the elementary and middle and power school have worked hard to put together, which is in the folder, which you've probably seen and you were probably expecting it tonight. Because some of them were expecting to be here and just between. Everything going on and and whatnot, it didn't make it on the agenda, so it will be on the March ninth agenda. Uh but you can review it and it maybe it'll be helpful, because if you do have any specific questions, you can let me know in advance and I can get that to. Um whether it's, it's in the folder, yep, because I had planned for it, but. So sometimes, doesn't make it on the agenda, but they're there, the others, some other things that are in there would be the preschool. Presentation, the MCAS presentation, so one from Mr. Rulo, one from Mr. Care Janus, um and in addition, one of the. Goals that in terms of communication was to use other methods, so instead of just sending out the newsletter, which we're doing. Um we've recording them and posting them on the website, so there's counseling in our schools from uh early November this year. Maynard High School Information Night in January, um and then we did a full-blown with WAVM, it was actually a lot of fun, the. Re youth risk behavior survey presentation, which was.
Amazing.
Glad you loved it. No, we did not have a big attendance, but.
And.
Participation from all the students all up, even you did great, you know.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Um see the video for that, I certainly recommend, and it is, is is it posted? Where is it on the, you know.
So that's one of the ways and that, so that particular presentation actually took a lot of work. So that wasn't just us recording ourselves doing that, that was actually WAVM. Um and John Ogden and Hannah Fulham really working with us, so we actually had the opportunity to sit behind the. Uh I guess in front of the camera, so if you've never done it, it's like being on channel five, because it's a real camera. With a teleprompter, so the words scroll while you're reading and the cameras behind this teleprompter. Um so it's it's very exciting, so that one, and I agree with uh. Natasha, that it was, it was well done, because they really did it professionally and that's kind of a nice thing. So the community can see and and we use one of the assets of the high school, anyway. Um so that's kind of overarching, connecting to the standards and the indicators in a variety of ways um for the mid-year. She finished it. Correct, he was there for me, by the, thankful, actually, they both were, to tell you the truth, because it's a, it's very much a team effort. Um and they know they, great skill set. Um so that's overview in terms of indicators, standards for the superintendent rubric. At the end, one of the other pieces of documentation would be the, because it's simple to explain, I'll just. Is the superintendent checklist, so every year the commissioner very nicely um puts together checklist for us. Actually, I'm sure Erica puts together for him to give to us, but that's beside the point. Um it's a multi-page document with really everything from, and it's got a wide variety from. State reporting when that's due, so that's our, part of our data person. Um Jackie, who works on that, to submitting discipline to the portal in midsummer. To uh sending notifications to parents about MCAS. So there's a little bit of, actually, there's not, there's a lot of everything, because everything on that list, um we do. Um there's a handful of things on the list that only apply to Commonwealth schools or charter schools or different schools, but overall, it's. You know, it's a solid fifteen-page spreadsheet list and it's included in there and you'll see the Xs indicate that it's already been done, because we're at this point in the year. For example, the MCAS letters that come out in fall, that has an X, because it's been completed, there are other things on that list that don't happen till spring. Um school choice reporting and things like that, so that list is really a team effort in terms of. That's not one person doing that all, that's many, many people.
No, I I just wanna thank you, because I know we brought, we talked about this in our personnel subcommittee. But, I've always found helpful as a non educator, of just one, the areas of responsibility. You know, we oversee you, but we also do not know all the details of all the compliance areas. And so I I thought it was really helpful for maybe on an annual basis, any any superintendent, just to hide that included as part of, these are the things that are. Gone, so that we're asked from an oversight perspective, we have a. Point of, these are the things that were were completed every year, um and. I don't know, it just helped in I think in that regard, so thank you very much for um for being open to that.
Then there's two other documents in there, actually, there's four, apologies, there's four other documents in the folder, one being. Uh the narrative in support of the superintendent goals and then the superintendent goal um charts. And then the district improvement plan narrative and the district improvement and chart, so they, hopefully there's sort of a crosswalk for each other. There's a lot of repetition, because the goals play off one another and support one another, so in the district plan it talks, you know. Um talks a lot about professional development, talks about math curriculum, um as it does in the superintendent goal, so there's things that are happening in each of those. Um so for the superintendent goal, talks about the literacy presentation and then math curriculum, so again, the literacy presentation is in. Um, the folder, so you can review that and we'll have the presentation next week, I do see Brian.
Yeah.
So, that's all right.
We'll we'll go to macro.
Yeah, he can wait a couple of minutes, he'll be fine. Um so that information is there, the committee that Chuck Care Janus is really heading up in terms of math has worked. Working really well, they had a draft vision and mission statement and they've already finalized a vision and mission statement for math. Um and they've been now, they've just started moving into vertical alignment, so the different buildings are figuring out, when can we do that? The high schools already said, yeah, we're gonna do that, I don't remember off the top of my head when that is, but they're working on that, same thing at Fowler. And we're waiting to hear from Green Meadow about when that fits in in terms of vertical alignment, um so that's, that's exciting. Um, there's growth both in literacy and in math and literacy is because we got the grant, so we're implementing that, so it's about a year ahead. Of the math and the math is really in the research stage, so it's looking at math, it's looking at um. And. It's in, it's looking at the different form, the different curriculums, because we know in a year or two, we will definitely need a new curriculum, because Go Math will be out of. Operation. So, but second goal, superintendent's second goal has to do with the. Uh ready initiative, the racial equity, diversity, inclusion initiative. Uh and our participation in that, specifically my participation in that, I also have Mr. Care Janus participating in that and we have formed a. Committee, a diversity committee, which is actually turning out to be a lot of fun and it's a really. Strong, I think is a really strong group, it's about twenty. Low twenties number of people ranging from parents, administrators and teachers at this point. And so one of the first tasks, and it's been a work in progress for us, is really to come up with a survey. And that this information's in there, I'll just give you a quick overview of that, but it's been interesting, we took the questions from Panorama. And we divided into groups and said, you know, let's really make this Maynard, and we go through and we're picking the questions and I think there's. A little bit of, do we pick the question or do we tweak the question to meet exactly what we want? So as soon as we realized that we had changed the questions just enough to meet our needs. We also realized we had changed the questions just enough to maybe not now be valid and reliable field-tested questions and it was just. Fortunate timing that Mr. Care Janus had a meeting at UMass Lowell and there's a group, the Education Commonwealth Project. That supports assessment of student learning, school progress through valid and democratic equitable surveys, et cetera. Um so then we met with them and we had the group meet with them, they actually came to a Zoom meeting, presented to the whole group, explained what they do. And then we took a step back and said, we had some great conversations about surveying and how we want to survey and what we want to learn. And now we're gonna, they, what they offer is their consortium, they're part of, I think, eight districts. And what they do is they use the Panorama survey, but because they're a research university, they have access to a lot. Of resources, including graduate students, who can do the data analytics and they're really well trained, so we will be putting that out in the next month, that survey. To students and staff to start, um and then that information will be part of the data walk that we will do. Um including some other demographic information that we can pull internally, um but it's exciting, I think the whole group, twenty people, very excited to work with. The people from UMass Lowell and in addition to those two stakeholder groups, were. One of the areas that's a challenge, both for us and for them, is parents and getting them to reply to a survey, sort of in a meaningful way, but they're open to. Pursuing that and we're open to, for lack of a better term, being at the groundbreaking work of that with them. As well as the other group that we talked about and they were open to this, they don't have a system yet, but willing to work with us would be the K to three kids. Um because that's a tricky group to get authentic answers from as well, so really, there's a lot of excitement around working with that. To get the data to use for the data equity walk, we're just a few months later than originally planned, if you look at the chart, the dates have been pushed back. So we will have that this year, just be later in the year and then we'll do it annually, so we'll, it won't take us long and we'll create longitudinal data about that. Um and then. The third goal has to do with communication and I think we talked a fair amount about that already, just in terms of the level of communication going out. Um, from me, from the buildings, et cetera, and then that narrative matches up with, I'm holding it up as. But it matches up well with the chart, so just to keep it simple. Um and likewise, the district improvement plan, um I sort of did the same thing, if that works for you all, that's. Let me know if you'd like a different format, I was. I thought this worked um in terms of the narrative and the chart, so if that works, that's great, if you need something different, you'll let me know. Um so for the district improvement plan, it talks about the math curriculum. Um and I give a little bit about that, there's more information in here in terms of where they're at and what they're doing. Um and we know that we're sort of on track to be able to pilot programming next year to then. Purchase the following year, so it's a step-by-step and really the goal is to create a structure. Based on how this goes, we sort of use what we learned from the literacy project, the literacy initiative. To the math curriculum review, to then be able to use that moving forward to to review other curriculums and then we'll just get on. Yep.
Can I um?
Yes.
Start, give you any talk live, which means go around, see if.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I think a lot of the district just improvement plan is very similar to the superintendent plan, so I'm fine taking a break and you can ask questions.
Okay, um and we'll go to Hillary first, um. See Hillary, any questions, thoughts?
Uh I don't have questions right now.
Okay. Um.
Um Mary, we do just questions first and then comments or? Do it all the same, yes. That's our, sorry. Oh my gosh, um overall, Brian, I really like what you've done here, um it's. Just it really, you've really done a great job of of just laying it all out and that, and a couple of things that stand out is um. The um appreciate the the updates on items that maybe had to be delayed, like for instance, the, you know. The the U Lowell piece and that kind of thing that that didn't happen before, that is really, it's okay to not not be in in. Where we thought, you know, back in September where we were gonna be, so I really, really appreciate um be being, you know, on top of that. And also really like the fact that you make really good use of subcommittees, I have to say. You know, which is great, because we have like the DEI um committee that that, you know, you're bringing in the parents, you're bringing in the. The teachers and community members and that, and um it, we've got a lot of bright people out there that are passionate. Um about different categories, I mean, I'm thinking about even the Green Meadow Building Committee. Um you know, there's a, there's different stakeholders in that from um and and they bring, everybody brings something different to the table, that's gonna make it very strong at the other end. Um the field task force um that you've put together and that, so really. Taking advantage of the talent that we've got there and and, you know, having it funnelled back, but at least so much work can be done by other people. So really appreciate um that piece of it too, I have some specific questions, if that's okay, I tried to consolidate them from the. The different um. Formats, one of the the big ones is, okay, so we've got the literacy um initiative that is more underway than the math, for instance. Um and even the DEI, but with the budget constraints that we are talking about right now, um and that. Uh are those budget constraints going to negatively impact us being able to, for instance, put the math curriculum? In place and that, is that something? Oh, sorry. Oh, should I give you?
So I, you know what, it's a great question. It will be a priority of ours and we haven't got to the point where we've looked at curriculum to come up with even a raw number for a math curriculum. Knowing that it's curriculum and curriculum and instruction is the heart of what we do, we will, we will find the money for that, I don't know how yet, I don't even know how much it is. And we're a year and a half out.
Okay, but that's good for us to know as far as just the conversation that we keep talking about with the budget.
Yeah.
And moving the system forward and that.
Education.
That is what we do.
Exactly, that's what we do.
It's like number one.
Yes. And then, um and as far as the literacy initiative. Um it made me think of a bigger topic that we had talked about at strategy with yourself, Chuck, Elizabeth and I. About, um you know, we've got all these assessment tools and that to to determine where the students are with the literacy, um from, you know, K, K through grade. Eight, I guess it is right now.
Yep.
Um and you had mentioned that there is a program, because my thought is always, when the students move from grade two to grade three. Uh do the teachers in grade three know where the students are in grade two and you mentioned.
Analytic view.
Okay, so go ahead, you talk.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know what, I, we had, we we purchased it, they actually, we just did, I would say in the last month. Um had a meeting with them, so they could demo it, so they've uploaded or. I would use some of our information, but not all yet and that and the. The point of that program is exactly what you said, it's sort of a broad platform, which takes the Dibbles, I'm just using examples. But the Dibbles, the DRA, MCAS, I Ready, any of the assessments we're using, we send it, we give it to them. And then they upload it, um or we may actually upload it into the system so that we can then look at individual kids and see how are they scoring. So to your point, we don't have to spend or we don't have to ask our teachers to spend a lot of their time and energy the beginning of every year, getting to know. I just use myself, so say Brian, you know, is Brian a good reader, good writer, not good reader, not good writer? They can just open that up and see, hey, he scored, you know, he's average in comprehension, or if it's an elementary school, maybe, hey. He's struggling in phonemic awareness at this point, I know I want to address that with him.
Perfect.
So we're in the process of uploading that and we should, I should be able to have an update, I would say in a couple of months, we'll have loaded up.
Very, very exciting, because you you hear constantly that, you know, it takes six weeks to figure out where all the students are at the, in September. And so you've lost all that time.
So it still takes time to get to know them, their, and you know, them personally and their strengths and weaknesses, like this should certainly help with the academic side of that.
Thank you, I'm still glad that that's happening. And then having to do with the DEI goal, um you had mentioned that the the representation is from the parents, the teachers and the ad administrators. And there was talk in there about potentially adding students at some point, age appropriate, is that still going to, I mean.
Yep, once we, we sort of thought we should get the survey underway, so once, and now that we have that, we can certainly add. Maybe sixth, seventh grade and up.
Perfect, perfect, that would be great, thank you, um and then the other one was having to do with, again, the DEI. Um the twenty-three, twenty-four school years fall data walk.
That didn't have twenty.
Okay, so.
That's next year, sorry, next year.
Okay, so my thinking was that because everything has gotten delayed and the. The data serve, the data walk is going to be delayed into the March-April timeframe.
Yep.
That that you were going to have more surveys done in the fall, I think if I read correctly, it didn't seem like there was enough time. For anything to, so I'm thinking you can postpone that. Permission.
No, I understand that, I think, well, and I say will, I mean, I'll work with the committee, but my thought was, could we do it in spring this year? Just because it's taken us a little time to get that data and then start again in fall, even though it's a shorter window and do it every fall, so we can do the data walk in fall. If they say no, to your point, they may say that's too soon, we just do it every, it wouldn't really matter as long as it's annually. So I see your point and I will confer with the experts. So I see your point and I will confer with the experts.
That was it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Hey, um, thank you. Uh, I think it's nice. I think that what we're doing now is working. I'm, I'm glad that we get to, we've been, um. Talking about the subcommittee meeting. So we've been, you know, this is not our first time seeing it. And I think that that's been working and I like that this year we have um, a structure to how all this is presented and I'm glad that we're doing this now. All of this makes a lot of sense. Um, and I think I have a, a pretty clear understanding of how you're moving forward. So yeah, it's, it all looks great and uh, yeah, thanks very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna give kudos to Elizabeth because she knows all.
And there's the benefit of having a teacher, school committee for sure. Um. Oh, actually, I'll go.
Oh, well, I, I also, I'm very happy with how you've laid everything out. Um, the information that you've included, um, it's made it so much easier to kind of follow along with what. What the goals were and what you've done so far. Um, and I think that you're, you're, you know, definitely on track. Um, so this is like. A million times better than last year. So I think you've done great. Yes, it's been great. Thank you.
Great. Um, so I just actually wanted to, you know, I mean, everything everyone says, I know this, we try to. Compile evidence a little bit more deliberate. And I think that has helped as well, looking at all the different, so it's. Kind of gives the committee each time, whenever they have moment to go back and look at your, your use of that. Um, throughout, throughout the year so far has been really great. Um, I know we talked in our subcommittee about, you know, maybe organizing a way. And I saw that you took a kind of a go to make sure that, you know, we understand all the efforts and, but it, I think that it's, you know, really. Been clear from there. I want to make sure that, thinking about. Looking ahead towards the, the annual. Where we're at for timing, one of the things that came up very strongly uh, last time and we wanted to make sure there was a space reserved was. Feedback from, from the staff. Um, through a survey and I know that we had talked about a timing, so I just wanted to call attention to that and make sure that that is a point that we. I know we thought maybe a survey would be going out and.
Well, again, I think that when we talked about this last time and now we have a representative here, but I think that we have to be careful about how we use survey. And I think that that will feel scary and especially if it's their name on it. Um, so I think that what we landed on, if I'm remembering from last time, is that we are doing this DEI subcommittee, um, survey already. And I don't know what the final items on that are, but I'm assuming a lot of it has to do with, you know, how people feel about their jobs and their culture, right? And so I think that that is the feedback that we're gonna use to, to look, look at how people are feeling about the community that they're in. Um, to evaluate Brian, but I don't think that, I think it's very hard to make items that are not gonna be scary for teachers. That won't have to have their names attached and, and I, I just don't see that, that the value in that. And I think that this is the way we'd have to get that feedback.
So I, I think that we did talk about a survey. I just don't know the timing of that survey.
It is going to be the, that's the, the survey that's already going out and that's going to get in March.
Okay, I haven't seen questions on it. So I'm just curious if it's gonna be something that we're gonna be also using as a document that will count towards that. I would want to look at some of those questions because I want to understand. If it's capturing what I would hope that it would be, but I don't, I don't know. That's why I wanted to make the point to just acknowledge it to, to say that that would be the expectation. Oh, Hillary.
Yeah, so I didn't think that it was necessarily hoping that that survey would capture everything we were thinking about in terms of. Superintendent evaluation type questions. I think it was sort of to generally give us an understanding of how the teachers are feeling about the culture at the school and we can take pieces of that. Um, in terms of saying like, you know, if they're all feeling supported, Brian's doing a good job in that area. But understanding that it's not a comprehensive, you know, assessment. Of like all the things that are being evaluated. But then, you know, if we have a meeting where teachers can come. Um, chat with us, like then, you know, coffee with this school committee, that's an opportunity to take some of that feedback. You know, if they want to reach out like last year, um, you know, maybe just announcing ahead of time what date we're gonna do the evaluation. So say, you know. This is the date in June. And then, and let them, so that they're not sending feedback after the fact, but you know, ahead of time, but not specifically sending out a survey. For our benefit in this way.
No, I, I, I think that we, yeah, we did talk about, but I don't know what that culture that survey is and when it's going out. Um, it sounds, again, March was what I, what I'm hearing. Um, and that would be great because I think that's what I would be hoping that we would be gathering is that. How, how do people, how do, how do people feel, you know, in the school and that kind of, that kind of information? I wouldn't want it. I wouldn't think that it would be a, a measurement where the, the staff are thinking how Brian did on his goals. That's not what their role would be and that's not the intent of what I would ask. That would be more of the feedback that people were very willing to email us. Last year, um, something along that line to create an opportunity that they would feel, because I think the sentiment was. Last year, it was, it felt maybe very sad at the time and there hadn't been a, a place reserved where teacher could provide feedback or stuff. And I don't want that to be the overall, and I know you and I talked about this a little bit last year is that, you know, this is something that we, you know, we want to do, want to make sure that. Everyone has an opportunity um, to share whatever it is, positive, you know, is great. But if it's not, you know, this, there's an opportunity to collect, you know, feedback on your work environment. Um, and how you feel working in the school. So I, that's, that's really what it is. It's just a place that we, that the staff know that that will be able to be captured. And that we can expect that that will be a place for that before we get to the end.
Well, I think that so we, so we're having a data walk, we're having, we're doing the survey and we're collecting data about how the school. Um, and culture is in general. And I think that's gonna be useful for us to understand. At our data walk for a lot of things and one of the things that we can use it for data in is how we evaluate Brian. But again, I think that teachers always have the ability to reach out to us and tell us how they're thinking, not only the way they did last year, but also. We're going to be, you know, later in our agenda, talking about how we're gonna be trying to get into the schools more, right, to talk to teachers. So I think that there is that opportunity. But I would never want to send a direct survey to them. Um, where, or, you know, in any way put them in a situation where they feel uncomfortable because we're asking them things that make, that. Put them in a spotlight.
No, I would never make anyone feel uncomfortable. It was just creating the opportunity if they so choose to share information. Um, which again, in response to last year, the feel, the feeling was that it was a surprise and maybe that people did not feel they had the opportunity. To give feedback if they so wanted to do. And that's where we got all this email. I think there was worry that there was disciplinary matter and that's not what it was. It was just our annual work in, in doing our superintendent evaluation. So.
I think the surprise was more that his evaluation was better. I don't think the surprise was not that they didn't.
Okay, I don't want to get into the, what, what everyone thought it was. I'm just letting you know what I want to make sure that we preserve a place for.
Let's go on.
Okay. Um, and then. Brian, I would, um, I know we had put in just the timeline of, you know, the things between now and the rest of this year for. So if you, you know, have, have an opportunity just to look at it and see if there's, that aligns with what, you know, I know we talked about in our subcommittee meeting, we can go back to it there. Um, but just make sure that we, we feel like that would work well still with, you know, making sure that we're aligning on that, the timing for all of the evaluations. And the compiling and whatnot, um. But also just, um, thank you. Thank you for your patience with us as we've kind of fumbled through this in a couple of years. To, I feel like we're getting to a better place and I, I do appreciate the work that some committees are doing as well. So, all right. I think that is. That, um, do we want to go back to, I know Byron is here?
Yes. Thank you. Um, thanks for your time tonight. And uh, just wanted to provide a, a little update on where things stand, um, with the, the solar project. I'm not sure that I can hear all the voices very well. So if you have a question, please feel free to, uh. To raise your hand or, or let me know, um, and uh. And we'll make sure all the questions are answered.
I'll repeat them also if, um, Mary, so whoever, my phone's sort of passing around, maybe that'd be easier. Okay, sorry.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um. So, so. It, it's a pretty quick update. Everything is going along really smoothly, um. We're thrilled about it. Um, there was a push towards the end of last year to make sure that the, the letter of intent. Um, was, was completed and, and signed by select and the, and, and Maynard and it, and it was before the end of last year. So, thank you very much, Brian, and, um, for that and, and. Um, we right away got in the submission for the interconnection, um, application. We submitted, um, for the, the incentives. Um, we received confirmation of the incentives already. The interconnection application, we're expecting feedback early next month. And, uh, the next piece of it, um, so that was. You know, for the, um, the, the utility component is obviously a big component. The incentives are a big component. And then there's physical due diligence. So that means, um, structural, uh, work, um, to confirm, you know, weight loading. Uh, is acceptable at the high school. We've, uh, had our engineer out to, to review it. I'm still, um. The report is still pending, but I think she has all the information she needs and we should be getting it back here fairly quickly. Um, the geotech studies, um. Again, another huge thank you to Brian and the team, um. You know, it's, we, we've been out on campus several times now, um. First to, to mark the area, then to do scanning, then to take a soil sample. And the initial findings of the soil sample were, were really positive, um. And we need to confirm, uh, the specific type of footings that we're gonna use that goes into the, the canopy and the, the final engineering of the canopy. Um. And we should be confirming that, um. Probably in the next month or so, probably even before then, um. And then this weekend, they're gonna go out and do their final piece, um, which is called existing conditions, um. And then at, at that point, we should have all the diligence. Done for the project, which is, which is excellent. Um, wait, is there a question? Did I see a hand? For a question?
Not yet.
Okay, um. And, um. So I think there's, there's a couple action items that, that are pending, um, that, that we're gonna be. Focused on in, in the near term here. One of them has to do with, um. Getting a determination or confirming a determination from the planning board, which will enable the canopy. Um, and we're preparing a, a letter, um. For Maynard's review for submission to the planning board to enable, uh, the canopy of, of. It's thirteen thousand five hundred square feet is the, is the canopy part, um. And so we want to make sure that the planning board. Reviews and, and approves and, and provides the determination that enables us for, for that, um. And initial guidance is, is it. It, it should be, um, we should be receiving the determination, but there's a, there's a process there to go through. So I wanted to, wanted to flag that. And then, then the next piece is, um. Confirming and finalizing the power purchase agreement and lease. And both those documents are gonna be informed by the findings of the due diligence. Um, and, oh. You know, Baynard has, has reviewed, um, the agreements, provided initial comments to us. Our councils looked at it. Provided initial comments back, so, um, it's actively in process, um. But we, you know, we definitely want to confirm the, the findings that go into the exhibits regarding all the, the specific canopy and rooftop specs. Um. So that's, that's it. I mean, that, and that's typically what we would expect for the process, um. Everything is going smoothly and, and Maynard and the team has been really good in providing all the information that, that we need to do the diligent process. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Hillary, did you? Have any questions?
What, what, like, I know it's a, um, not sad, but what would you guess as far as dates?
In terms of dates? Um, so from. From now, I'm guessing it's, it's probably gonna be about a month before the agreement is, is signed. I think from there. Um, you know, we, we also are gonna go through the planning board component. After that's done, um, from our understanding, um, town, town meeting is, has approved. Of solar, so that should be fine. Next, it would be, um. Confirming that the final engineering for the, the structure, um, the permitting and then ordering the specific materials. So I would see this as, as a project that would be advancing throughout the course of, of this year, um. We really need to work with Maynard in terms of what they would like to see on site so that we can dovetail our, our work. But in a canopy process, there's typically two aspects to it, um. Well, taking the, the project in different pieces, on the canopy side, there are typically two aspects. One is, is the foundations. And then the next piece is you put the steel on the foundations and then the, the modules and, and wire it together. So there's. There's that component of it, but they can happen, you, you know, separately. So there's a coordination with the school in terms of what they would. Like to see and, and what's gonna map to them. And then the other piece of it is, is the solar part, um, on the roof. And there, you know, typically there's the loading of the panels, which is the most visible where we'd be using lifts or cranes to get the panels onto the, onto the roofs. And at that point, it's just, you know, the wiring, the racking and, and that all happens fairly quickly, um. So, the physical construction, I'm guessing is gonna happen. Mid to end this year, probably, um, final turn on date would be end of this year. Early to mid next year is, is kind of how I'm, I'm seeing it, but there's still some variables out there and, and. When we actually start the construction, we'll have a Gantt chart and provide regular updates in terms of. Our activities, just so that we can dovetail with the, the school staff and, and make sure there's visibility to what, what we're up to.
Thank you.
That's a clarifying question, um, end of year, you mean, uh, calendar year?
Calendar, yeah, oh, good question, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so end of calendar year, so end of twenty twenty-three to beginning of twenty twenty-four is when you might see the. Turn on, turn on. Board.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's fair. Again, we, we're a little far out to, to give something very specific, but I think that, that timeframe to me. Looks, looks on target. And again, that's, and, and that's in, in part gonna be confirmed by what we, what we receive back from ever source. If they require studies or anything else, it, it may push the timeline one way or another, but. We'll be able to dial in on, on a pretty accurate timeframe in the, in the near future.
You confirm the, uh, I know there was a change from the, the blocks. There was something about the, what you get back, um. What we were able to secure before and we had to go, since we had to go back, we weren't able to maybe get those same rates. Yeah, i- is that at all making sense? It was like different block rates?
Yeah, so, um, clear result and D O E R were, were excellent, um. They, um, provided the initial block rate from when it was submitted, um. There's gonna be an extension which we'll need to do for the, the incentives, just based on the timeframe of the project. Um. But yeah, what we have now are, are two block fives, um, which is excellent. And so it's block five for the canopy and, and it, it's always been block five for the roof, so.
Great, so, um, compared to, I guess, what we were looking at before and where we are with this. Do we envision? The.
It's promising from an incentive perspective, you know, we. That, so, so in terms of the incentives, it's great news. It really is. And, and it's, it's too early to, to confirm all the, all the final economics until the rest of the engineering is in and, and the utility. But, but in terms of the incentives, it's, it's very positive.
Okay, so once the economics, I mean, once the engineering with, is all finalized, we'll be able to get more solid expectations or forecasting. Um, for the economics.
Yep, and, and we do that, you know, obviously with Maynard and, and with the guidance of Beth Greenblatt as well too, who's been. Active with this project. So it's, it's in conjunction with her that we would be reviewing that. And then. That, then the, the final economics is obviously included in the, in the agreements.
Great, thank you very much, um. Mary?
Just a question, a clarifying question, that we have to put, have a warrant article for, to get it passed?
So, um, Mary was asking a clarifying question if we had to get a warrant article passed. And I think what I understood is that the warrant article that we've already. Passed is still applicable. Passed is still applicable. Is that correct, Byron?
Correct.
Okay, there's no other town action that's required because we were still, we're still under that same. Approval.
With the exception of the planning board determination.
So the planning board determination is the only new piece that would be introduced?
That, yeah, it doesn't go to town meeting, it's just with the planning board, but yes, that's. That happened at the town level.
Okay. Terrific, thank you, Beth.
No, no questions, thank you.
No questions, Mara?
No question.
All right, and I, oh, Hillary, you had one more question?
Yeah, is that planning board something you could use our support with in any way?
Say that, say that one more time?
Um, is the, is there anything we can do to help you with the planning board?
Oh. Well, I think as soon as we're going to draft a letter and then I I think it will be from Brian and and his team in conjunction with Beth and town council. So from the. In terms of the school, school committee. I I don't think so. I think I unless there's formal signatures that are required from the school committee, but aside from that, I I think we're okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Byron, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I really, really appreciate it, and I. I think we'll look to Brian in the future when we get more updates as things kind of. Become more solid.
Thank you very much for attending and just be here and be able to address some of the questions. Directly, you did a much better job than I would have done. I would just written them down, email to you and come back. The fact that you could be here greatly appreciated. And when you think it's. You know, if I get a lot of questions or if you're feeling like it's a good time to give an update, we can do it again, you know, in a few months.
I I I would like that. It's a, it's it's definitely a development process, so to do updates like this is. Is is a good way to do it. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah, so we can make opportunity on our rolling agenda disconnecting, they'll just kind of reserve place periodically for that. Okay, all right. Now we will go back to. Policy, so I will. I yield the floor to Mara on. All the subcommittee stuff. Looks like we have a couple of things in the folder for. Vote. Yes, so. The last time that we looked at this, there were some slight changes to the DBJ. And then we added the DBJ dash E with the cost centers. And. So it will be because we have to. Rescind. No, I'm just looking at the other ones we have, we have to rescind, we have three and three oh four, yep, because they're all. Yeah. And then. And then we were adopted, so we'll do that maybe in. One motion, but I just want to make sure, does. Does anyone have any questions about? DBJ, the budget transfer. Authority. Policy. And then that will have. The. Exhibit DBJE. Which are the cost centers that are. Referred to in the policy. It is on the bottom, bottom, it's a cross reference on DBJE cost center exhibit. It it is on the one online that we're looking at, so. No, thanks. Yeah, okay, so yeah, it is, it is cited in the cross reference there for the one that I think we would be approving tonight. And. I'm really excited because I know that MASC has put out like a whole bunch of updates, like multiple years with the financial policies, and we've done a lot of. Conversations through the years, so. My only other question would be. See if we're, we're talking about rescinding the three oh four. Which is. And then rescinding. Warrants. And bills. We don't have one for that one, do we? The warrants?
We, I think we are, we already approved that one?
I don't think we did. I think we said because it was on one, we were going to do them all at the same time. We looked at it last time, but I don't think we took action on it because.
I thought we did do that one.
The warrant one number we I thought I couldn't remember if we actually.
I don't didn't bring my binder, otherwise I'd. Take a look. I was pretty sure that we talked about it, but I I thought we were going to try to do them all at once because they had. The policies were all. Right. That's what we were doing.
Okay, okay. Got it. I knew there was something funky because it was two different ones on.
Yeah, we couldn't, yeah, we could rescind this one because there are two different ones.
Okay. So I think. Does anyone else have any other questions about them before we? So I will entertain a motion. To. Or does anyone go, let me just make it since I have the microphone here, okay? I just realized that there's only one microphone here. All right, so. I will make a motion that we rescind policy. Three oh four transfer of funds and three oh three warrants. And I'm sorry, school committee financial actions. And adopt. Policy DBJ budget transfer authority. And DBJE. Which is the cost center exhibit.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, and just to mention that the DBJ. Policy we have does cite the exhibits, that's the one that we are approving. Okay, I will roll call Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Bradley? Olivia Delbota?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Motion carries. Great. Uh, community. Updates?
Nope, we still have, oh, sorry, sorry.
DD.
Darn, all right, we got one more.
And this also has to rescind that one, got it.
This one was incorporating edits from the last time we discussed at the last meeting. Or like two meetings ago. Um. Editing wording in the first sentence and then. Adding a piece of the major policy to the mass policy.
So is this? Suggested stuff, is this all adopted? Can we assume the edits in there are are what's being recommended from the policies subcommittees? That's what we're saying? Okay. Okay, so that taking out that in alignment with the district and then adding that. Along with the measures. Okay, yeah. Yeah, before expenditure. Oh, wait, hold on.
That was where we had like, you know, a timeframe. And we removed it to just say before there's been.
Is there? So is it that? Is there a concern without having?
Because eventually the grants that we approved like we did Tuesday will have to, you know, go through us. And the concern is that the teachers are waiting for those funds usually timely to be able to move forward with their grants.
So it would be that we have to, it's more of the. Urgency to the to the process because we don't want to hold up.
Right. Yeah, especially we're the new piece that is.
A new step.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have a meeting, for instance, you know, tonight we do, but if we are two weeks out, then that delays what they can do. Probably won't pertain to other grants, but like I say, I'm thinking we have to get foundation.
Is there any objection to adding that? Or expanding that in there to on a timely basis before expenditures? Does anyone have any concern with that?
I'm okay with that. No, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so can we? I'm 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 done with that, too. Do you have any? Okay. Okay. Or is there, is there, is it okay?
What? Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think back when we, when we were in our meeting and we discussed. The timely basis. You know. What that having that in there.
Okay, and it was, were no concerns were raised?
If I can.
Yeah, yes, please. Oh, so the assumption is that we are timely?
Yes, I think so.
The last meeting and we end up tabling things until the following meeting?
Yes.
That kind of thing is what I'm thinking it could prolong.
So I think it will be like on the school committee, there's an action like that's, that's a, yeah, that would be a priority that would not be like, we're not holding up business. We, I don't think that would be ever our intent. Is to hold up business.
Right. You know, especially if, you know, this is, it's, you know, if we have to approve something that's going to, you know. But I see where you're, what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay. Point taken. So. I I I don't. I'm okay with including if mayor, if it if it doesn't harm anything, I have no, I think it's fine adding it in there. That.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, let's add it in.
I think so.
And so why not? No harm.
It'll be this with edits.
Yes. So I will make a motion that we rescind policy three five one. And. Replace it with grant proposals and special projects. Policy DD. With edits to include on a timely basis. As well.
Second.
Any further discussion? No, Hillary, anything?
No.
Okay, all right, roll call vote, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Liz, oh, sorry, I'm looking at.
Yes.
You. Very brightly?
Yes.
Olivia Delbota, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Natasha, I'm like, I have this whole looking around thing, I'm again, I have to get a little bit used to that. All right, motion carries five zero. All right. Now. We move on to updates, community updates. Gosh, I have so many folders now. And I think this is just reserve a place where we had talked about before about our outreach with the different areas. PTO, the seniors. And staff and. And do you want to, I'll just go in order. Oh, Hillary first. Oh, Hillary, Hillary, do you want to give update, anything?
Sure, I talked to the Boys and Girls Club, and they're of course wonderful. Um, they, I had mentioned that I didn't think that we would be able to be in their lobby area. Because of being kind of small at pickup time, they said if we, we of course could use the parking lot and set up a table and. Do something when it's warmer. If we wanted to do something when it's still cold out. We could use their back homework room and they could open up the back doors and sort of section office space. For us to be in there. I said we probably wouldn't mind waiting till it's warm. Um, to sort of avoid. Commandeering their homework room. But they're really wonderful and. The other thing, this is sort of unrelated, but they also were in the same conversation. I asked them about providing childcare that week that school starts. And they're very willing. To see what they can do to help with that, like they really want to do anything they can do to help our kids.
Great, is there an opportunity, some dates, maybe the next step it sounds like would be. Putting some dates on the calendar or proposing some dates just to get them penciled in. And we can work towards that and I don't know, maybe like April. Is that? Just assuming that, I mean, can change it if the month it's cold that day, but. I think putting a goal to it would might be.
My guess is that they're sort of, that's sort of the more open. Thing, so we would maybe want to plan like the time with teachers and plan some of the other. Areas first.
Okay, and we have more flexibility with with them.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that makes sense because I I just want to make sure that we are, we we're offering it all at the same, like, you know, so if someone can't go to, you know. That they know that this is an opportunity or the seniors, you know, like all of that, I think, just think it's part of that, just the overall messaging. Which would be. Helpful to have. So, okay, that's, that's good to know. Any, any questions about the Boys and Girls Club outreach? Right, Hillary, thank you very much. Uh, Mary? Oh, oh, okay, so. Oh, so we are in, we've gotten a couple of back and forth right now, we're scheduling. The outreach with the senior center, it'll be on a Friday. And there's a couple of dates we proposed, I think it's been. Set, but we're looking towards either March or early April. I think, you know, what I had. Suggested, I think Mary probably, we agree that this is something I think we need to do, not just like a one and done, it's really kind of. With some regular frequency. That we can make ourselves available, you know. Coffee or whatever it is and. Provide an opportunity for our seniors to ask questions of us, you know, things that they don't really get to do, especially that there's no publication about information as easy. So, and that will be the Friends of the Seniors, the Council on Aging, and the hope is, you know, really whoever. Wants to be there, so anything else?
No, I think as far as written. Amy. Amy.
Amy Lovelace has been, is really supportive of the the monthly brochure that goes into the Action Unlimited, which is our main. Written periodical, it seems like now. So if we had anything like even the Green Meadow Elementary School or anything like that, as long as we get the information to her and in, you know, a. Good, good amount of time, she's happy to include that. So have you seen that the insert? It's the senior insert. It's about three weeks, three to four weeks. Yeah, it's a, it's a decent decent lead time, but I'm thinking the Green Meadow Elementary School might be a good. You know, that might be a good resource, too, because they they seem to, it seems like everybody, a lot of people read that, actually. Even if you read the Action Unlimited, you happen to, you know, go through that also.
I like their newsletter, it's helpful.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I just was in charge of the library, which it turns out I didn't have to contact at all because they have a calendar. And there's a plenty of things that we can, I'm sure, if you like, depending on who we want to talk to, like there's, they do some events for seniors, some events for people who have small children. All these things you know already. So I think we just, once we figure out who we want to contact at the library, then. I'd rather contact them after we know what audience we're after and then say, can we do this here? I I also know that I I didn't know this before, but I just saw a new priority, you know, this that Kate Hogan has office hours. Every once in a while there, just for an hour. And so I thought that was an interesting model that we might want to think about also, just if it's on its own, but.
I thought about that before, too, because I've seen other like others, other towns, they do have like a, they like someone will come into the school. And they might have a conference, whatever, and they just feel like, you know, if you want to drop in. Or the slot board, you know, they they have them in different towns, so I. I do like that because then it, again, if it's set up with some frequency, you know, it becomes like in like habit, you know, it's people expect it, and then there's that. Doesn't feel like this huge exercise of like, how do we engage better with the community? Because we're already creating that. Good foundation there. So I would be a proponent of exploring something like that, maybe.
Right.
Moving forward.
Yeah, so either it's something separate like that, or it's like I would, we would like to talk to this population, let's make sure that we have, we ask about being in the library at this time.
So on that note, I was. Information today about a. A Saturday, I think it's March eighteenth. For organizations and that it's like for for any organization or that in Maynard that wants to be there. Because I signed up the food pantry and we're signing up the Ed Foundation, too, and I'm wondering if that could be. Possibly, I think it's from ten thirty to twelve on that Saturday. And I wonder if that.
So it's the eighteenth.
Yes. So it's sort of like for organizations, they had set it up right before COVID, and then, you know, you had to. Obviously shut it down, but they they were, you know, they they set this date up, so I'm wondering if that would be, or if it'll be too busy.
Well, it says, join us to learn about the group services, volunteer opportunities, special events, and how to get involved and stay informed.
So I'm thinking that we could, I can fill out one for us to be there, too. I'll be there for something different, so one of you guys would have to, you know, we could. You didn't know it's in March, yeah, which is great. I mean, we could be tag team as far as, you know, tables right beside each other or that. Do you want us, do you want me to set us? I mean, we could be tag team as far as, you know, tables right beside each other or that, um do you want us, do you want me to set us up for that? Consider it, oh, there you go, that's good.
Um and I will. Tomorrow, we know, um I did the PTO, um. The, I only heard from the high school. Um and theirs was last night and I wasn't at the point, at the point that we had originally talked about. I thought that our workshop was going to be last night, so I didn't schedule. Um but though, um what I'll do is I'll send out an email um with um all, so.
No.
Green Meadow and Fowler both have um their schedules online. Um and um so I will just um, you know, we can just, I think we can, I'll, I can email them to let them know. These are the dates that we would like to to show up, so you know, people can pick and choose what they want to do. Great, and I am charging my computer, so, because it's about to die. So one of the other. Club refers, yes, yes, thank you, of being in person. Figuring that out, okay, thank you, Brian. Oh, yeah, um well, I'm, yeah, I don't, see, that's where I wasn't really sure about what the staff piece and how we're engaging, so Brian, do you, is there an update for? For that on um or anything to share about outreach? Or how we can better engage with the staff and their. Okay, okay, that'd be great. Um. Yeah, and I, just to reiterate, I think the goal really is, how do we go to a place that is really what they embed easier for the staff? And how we can be in a space that is not intrusive, but allows the opportunity to to be available. So, all right. That is that, uh moving on, Chair Report, uh just to reiterate, you know, thank you Chuck for your participation. And Brian and Colleen for all your work on um the budget stuff and Mary as well, putting the presentation for the Joint Budget Subcommittee. This past weekend, uh thank you to the Select Board and to the FinCom for allowing us an opportunity to present. Um it appeared there were a lot of questions, so I am glad that that um opened up that that space for us to be able to answer. And. Oh, yeah, I was, I, I thought, she was, uh, yes, we were on the phone. So that was um.
Last minute.
Yeah, it worked out, worked out well, and um and and, you know. Greg also very thankful that he was able to at the last minute um presented and we were able to share it. Yeah, so. Yeah, I did say, I did say that. Yeah, I say, I, okay, maybe I need to say a lot, I did say, Colleen, yes, thanks, everybody, everybody. Lot of hands, so it was definitely a huge team effort. Um and so again, just to reiterate, what came up earlier, we are supposed to have a tri-board meeting. At some point, we will, I will tend to select word meeting to hear if it's brought up then at that that point, but we should be expecting to hear about what will happen from there. Um and then moving forward, we'll, um I think generally. We'll have some conversations about what what advocacy the school committee will be taking at that point, so. Um charter review, there's a charter review, a public hearing, and I just want to share because I happen to know about it, I'm on the committee. But there is a public hearing on Tuesday at seven o'clock, seven ten during the select board meeting. It is not wellly, well-publicized anywhere, unfortunately, they have a new website. But because this is a once every ten year event, I think it is important for just awareness where every everywhere. Um because this will be looking, there are updates to the charter that would be being proposed, so. And this is the only hearing that is scheduled, otherwise it will be going to um. It will need two actions after, so then it was already gone to the state, so they've done their first review, legals reviewed. A town will have to vote, um and then there's also the ballot, there's like two actions afterwards that the town has to take, so. Uh a lot of work, years, years into this, so uh anyway, so that's that.
Tuesday at what time and where?
It's, it's going to be hybrid meeting, it's this, at during this luck board meeting at seven ten, there's a public hearing for the charter review. And it's just to accept comments.
Okay.
Questions about the charter, that's part of the process um to have public hearing.
Okay.
And but because it's the day after a holiday and during for vacation, it, those, you know.
Yep.
Okay. Um and I know we have a new um dog, Otis, so welcome to Maynard Otis. Yes, so is uh is officer, is there, is there a certain frequency that that Otis arrives to school every day? Or is that, is there a particular plan? Is that how it's been working with?
Otis is connected to Officer McCann.
Yeah.
She that we're using.
Oh, okay, so if she's here on premises, the wonderful, then, and so is Otis. Oh, well, that is fantastic, so I think that will be, um I I saw pictures already and Otis has um his own page, I think as well. So very, very, very popular already around town, um so just welcome to Maynard Otis. And I think that's, I'm, it's only after, really, so anything um going to subcommittee reports? Um Hillary, anything for you?
Not much, um we're trying to meet for the policy subcommittee more frequently, um to sort of, yeah, that um. Work on the reconciliation there, um and we met for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Subcommittee. Um and went over a bunch of um topics to try and, to try and stay on top of some things. Um and that was productive, um and then um. I just wanted to ask if we could get more of the microphones for folk, uh folks, because I noticed that. Um even when Natasha's on the computer, I'm hearing, I'm only hearing when she's facing forward. And I'm hearing very little from Mara, Elizabeth, and Mary, um and.
So we get a lot of reverb, but I've been looking to get a USB. Buy a new tray, so we might not be able.
I I heard about three of the words you just said.
We have a microphone here, maybe we just need more of like a.
Yeah. Because it's on a computer and not like a WAVM setup, it's going to get a lot of feedback. Um, so I did just actually during the meeting, go onto Amazon and purchase a a USB multi-port. Maybe that will help because I have another one of these mics and we can do some testing. Um but like Natasha said, we can also get a mic that we actually pass around. Yeah. Yeah. Um. But it's. It's very difficult to not hear. Yeah. Um, yeah. Right, and plus, this room is enormous, so it's not ideal for something like this, yeah. Yeah. I wonder if there's just a to- a different alternative, like a system that just um.
Um are you hearing when we pass it like this?
Um I do like when the person has it, like I just heard you, when Colleen had it, I didn't hear anything you and Natasha were saying. Um. And with the computers, it works if you're facing the computer, like when Natasha is facing her computer, I can hear her through.
She doesn't have her, you don't have your microphone.
I don't have my microphone on.
She's got the microphone.
I just have, I have this right here, so, yeah, this is where I'm trying to actually look forward a little bit too, because I was looking up here. But I realized, actually, I can see you here, because I logged into Zoom.
Because.
I just, I didn't do, yeah, so I didn't, I didn't turn my audio on, but I just so I could see you when um. When you were asking questions and raising your hand, just to that part was, because it was hard with the presentation happening, so for me, it was easier to.
It must be something else where the, just the 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 direction that you're facing. Um because I noticed when Natasha, if she's facing the computer, I hear her, when she's facing to the side, I don't, so I had thought that, you know, um. The Zoom had.
I don't have a, my microphone's not on. You know, anyway, I I said, do you want to turn on audio? I didn't sign into it audio.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Um and then I think the next time you have a stressful school committee meeting, Otis should come visit the school committee.
What happened? Otis, yeah, I think Otis needs to be at our public hearing for budget and um all of those. I would like to have Otis.
I saw that Otis went and visited um one of the schools in Lexington that had one of those sweating events. Um to help comfort the kids afterwards, and that was really nice.
Yeah. All right, um Elizabeth, anything, I'm just going to the, Mary, Mary, sorry.
Okay, yeah, same, I, we, she already mentioned the DEI subcommittee meeting, and we also had our strategy subcommittee meeting to talk about Brian's goals, which you just heard about, so. Nothing else.
Okay, oh, policy, um will the emergency, that that policy need any, any mending? Is that what the plan is, the, is there any mending to that policy at all that needs to happen or?
What policy?
That emergency plan, is that something that we have, the EBC, is that something that will be discussed at the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, not this time. Okay, I just.
Not this next time, but we, we.
It's one of those policies that we adopted that just, it has, it it mentions about the AED and emergency plans, and we just want to make sure if there's, you know.
Oh, oh, no, uh, we did, um, I think we did at least look to see if tho- they, those were mentioned, and they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right. Great, um and then we've talked about budget extensively, I don't have anything there to add. Um, I think that's really it. Um, all right, so consent agenda, anything else for the subcommittee? Mara, yeah, she talked about, do you want more?
I I don't have anything more.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I thought you were done.
No, no, it's okay, uh you know, she talked about the policy and, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
All right. You jinxed us. Um, all right, so I will.
We still have.
Exactly, that was, that's going to go fast, half of it's, oh, we do have to return for the, no, the exec- the secretary one, we have. No, the secretary.
Secretary.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one we have, um so the um consent approval of minutes for twelve six twenty twenty-two. And twelve twelve twenty twenty-two. Any? Oh, you know, I'm reading the agenda. Okay, sorry, hold on.
Does it matter that it's wrong on the agenda?
No, I just want to make sure that if I'm accepting it, I want to say the word, the right one, so, yeah, twelve fifteen, okay, got it. So then, that objection, I will uh accept um the approval of twelve, the minutes for twelve. Six twenty twenty-two and twelve fifteen twenty twenty-two. All right, warrants. Twenty-three zero three nine, twenty-three zero four zero, twenty-three zero four one, twenty-three zero four two. Twenty-three zero four three and twenty-three zero four four, any questions about those? Nope, all right, so without objection, I will move that we accept those warrants. Great, now we are going into executive session under MGL Chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Secretary of Union. AFSCME Local seventeen oh three, State Council number twen- uh ninety-three. And um we will be returning to open session. We do not need to meet in executive session for um. Strategy around the superintendent negotiation at that point, so, all right, roll call, yeah, roll call, uh Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes, all right, we are in during executive session. Well, yeah, we'll be returning. All right, so.
Do you have to start it up again now? Roll call back in?
Now we're just back, now we are returned and she's recording now. Um, this is where we have that agreement language on what their. Motion should be, I'm just going to perfect the agenda. So um I will make a motion that we. Approve and.
Is this recording?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just checking.
Yep, no, no.
Good.
Near it. Uh that we um we approved and ratify the, or we ratified the approved contract, I don't even know the right wording anymore. Um for the collective bargaining for the Secretary of Union, AFSCME Local seventeen oh three. Day Council number ninety-three, effective July first twenty twenty-three. Through July, no, sorry, through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six with edits. Or with with, yes, sorry, with ratified contract, thank you.
Second.
Okay, um any, any further discussion? Okay, right, roll call, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes, Mara Hogan?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, yay. And yes, so moved. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes, Hillary, but we're going to motion to adjourn, yes? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mara?
Yes.
Natasha, yes, all right. Thank you.
You want these?
Yeah, you want to pull this back?